We're ready? Okay, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Our Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I call this meeting of Independent School District 544 to order due to the current federal and state. One moment here, I want to... Due to the current federal and state emergency declaration, the Minnesota Directive to residents to stay safe, and the guidance of a limiting person-to-person contact due to the COVID-19 pandemic, this meeting of the Fergus Falls School Board meeting is being conducted in accordance with Minnesota Statutes 13D.021. With that, clerk, will you establish your court for us, please?
Kirby Anderson.
Here.
Natalie Kavitzson. Melanie Cole, resident. Matthew Lemke.
Here.
Missy Hermes, yes. And Stephen Vegasah.
Please sit here.
We have a court.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Don't move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Natalie Kavitzson. Melanie Cole, resident. Oh, yes. Matthew Lemke.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Stephen Vegasah. The motion carries.
Thank you. We have a resolution on the acknowledgements.
I'd like to offer the following resolution and move for its adoption. And thank you to Anna McGary for the donation to the Otter Angel Account, an account created to anonymously assist families on the pay for student meals. And thank you to Comdel Innovation for their donation of steel to the KSS Machining Program. And congratulations to Danielle Buckmeyer and the Kennedy Secondary School students in grades 6 through 11 who competed in the Minnesota National History Day State Finals. Bailey King and Sophie Smith that earned honorable mention in the Senior Green Division category. And Cara Dolikson earned honorable mention in the Senior Individual Exhibit category.
Do we have a second on that resolution?
One second.
Melanie, thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Melanie Cole. Yes. Matthew Lemke.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Stephen Vegasah. And Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Natalie Kavitzson. Resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to reports. Just one second here. Scott, it's just two. I'll make sure these come through. We're going to do our first report. Our elementary principal, Mr. Kolbeck.
You all right?
There we go.
Yes.
Yep.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, here we are, asking of school. Hopefully it is gone, although I'm honest, the virus hits. I would say those first two or three weeks went so quickly. But also kind of found a way to raise your... At least live, see, and to... As we enter last week of school, I wanted to highlight something that I think many of our families are very excited for. It's our staff. And that is, that parade. Week type parade there for Thursday this week, from 4:00 to 6:00. At all three elementary schools, actually. So, parade's going to look like this. The staff of the schools are going to social distance themselves around the school block. While the families of our students are going to be in their cars circling the school block in a clockwise fashion. It will be really fun and exciting to see all of our students again. And I know our students are looking forward to seeing their teachers. A couple of things about the parade will be really, really important, that our families remain in their cars. I have a hunch that the traffic will be slow because I think the whole community will notice that there'll be very, very heavy traffic between the 2 hours before 6:00 on Thursday. So, we're just going to ask all of our students and families to remain in their cars. And we're just having a really good time, safe parade. But we're hearing some great ideas of some different things that are going to be happening at the parade. It's important to supply music. So, we'll see what comes of that. It will also be important that nobody's parking, of course, on the school side of the street. And we'll make sure that we take care of that leading up to the start of the parade. I want to just thank our local police department. We ran the ideas of these parades past them and received their blessing. So, we thank them because we know that's probably going to affect the traffic patterns in the community a little bit during that time. You know, while I want to mention in our local police department, I wanted to just mention Officer Abram Silvernagle, who has been our school resource officer over the years. And I know recently he received a promotion within the ranks of sergeants. So, he's not going to be our school resource officer anymore. But we really, really appreciate his work. I believe that means that Officer Cedar Hurd, who was spending about half of his shift being a great presence at the three elementary schools, I believe he's going to be moving into that full-time SRO position. And then I've also heard that perhaps Officer Kitzman will be then coming into the role that Officer Cedar Hurd was holding for us. So, just can't thank those people enough for their good work. And just happy that we're going to get to continue to work with a number of them. Should mention that Friday of this week is our last day of school. It's a happy day. That should not be confused with the last day of childcare. And the last day of childcare is also on Friday. But that is not a happy day. That is a full day of childcare. Childcare will run from 7:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on Friday, while our last day of school on Friday goes till about noon. And then a big shout out to our technical department, who's going to be busy here pretty soon collecting all the book boxes that we distribute to our students for our elementary schools. Book return will happen on Friday of this week, starting at noon, anytime from noon until 6:00 a.m. And also on Monday, next Monday, June 1st, from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Book return will be at Kennedy Secondary School. Also want to just recognize and congratulate Kristin Kavitzson. Kristin is a second grade teacher at out of school and has been for the last two years. We wish her well. She has accepted a first grade teaching position at Centennial Elementary School in Fargo. We're happy for Kristin, although we're sad to see her leave. We're happy for her and that Kristin and her husband and their new baby girl live in West Fargo. So, when we're teaching in Fargo, she will get two hours of her day back without now traveling each way from West Fargo to Rose Falls. And then I just want to give you, as board members, a quick update on our kindergarten registration. Latest numbers, as I checked this morning, we're currently sitting at 147 students. 138 of them are registered for all day, every day. Three of them are registered for the morning by only option, and then six of them for the Monday, Wednesday, and Friday option. So, we're at 147. I should really say that maybe not all 147 are officially registered, but some of them in that group of couples, they are coming. It's just a matter of we need them now to take the next step and do that official registration. With that, I think I'll just kind of stop. I know that was a brief report here this morning, but that's all I have for you. And I can entertain any questions at this time.
Any questions for Mr. Kolbeck?
How many potential students still have not committed for kindergarten in the fall?
Maybe a couple more things as I'm sitting here thinking about this. Just want to tell you a quick story. I was talking to a student at McKenna School the other day. He comes for childcare. And I asked the little boy, I said, "Hey, what's your favorite part of childcare? What's your favorite part of the day?" And he shared with me that arts and crafts were his favorite part of the day at childcare. And that surprised me a little bit. But then it didn't because I thought about some of our support staff during this time who have really stepped up and they found themselves in some roles that they initially didn't sign up for. And we have two people in particular at McKenna who have been in charge of arts and crafts. And they have just taken on that task and their creativity is kind of shining through. They're creating just some really, really engaging and nice activities for our students. So, I wanted to share that because that's just one of many, many, many apples of the neat things that our support staff have done throughout this time of childcare. I've even seen videos of some of our childcare workers singing songs and then videoing those songs and then sending them to the teachers who are sending them up to their students. So, some really, really neat things. I've also seen some fantastic activities from our teachers. They have really stepped up to the plate here during this time and have gotten creative as well in other delivering instruction through this kind of distance learning. So, goodos to our staff. This last week here, we're not pushing out any new instruction, but we are still continuing to make connections with our students and push out activities to them here during the last three and a half days of school.
Do you want to try it again?
Mr. Kolbeck?
Mr. Kolbeck, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you just a little bit.
Mr. Kolbeck, do you have an idea of the potential number of students that might still be signing up for kindergarten?
Well, I can look at the kindergarten census and know how many haven't signed up. But of the numbers that haven't signed up with us, they fall into many categories. Many of them tell us that they're not ready to send their child to kindergarten yet and they're going to wait one year. Others will be attending other schools, either within the community or within the area. And others, quite frankly, and this happens every year, so it's something to be a lot more worried about. But there's others on the list that we just can't get a hold of and that we don't hear back from. But many of those students or families probably moved. They were gone since their child's name ended up on the census since that is a list that started, you know, four or five years ago and continues to grow starting with that first student who got on the census many years ago until what we have today. So, am I able to project out? I know this. I know we'll at least have enough students for the eight kindergarten teachers that we have ready to go. The challenge will be, it's not really a challenge, but what we'll have to do this summer is, like we obviously do, keep a very, very close eye on those numbers. And at some point in time, we'll have to decide, are we going to go with eight kindergarten teachers in the fall? Or will we end up needing to add a ninth section and going out and hiring a kindergarten teacher later in the summer?
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Kolbeck? Thank you, Mr. Kolbeck. Our next report will be from Tindie Run, our elementary principal, Cleveland.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning. Good morning.
As we've gone through the calendar year here, we just can't help but always looking, taking a look at the calendar. And our Google Calendar reminds us of all of the special events that happened during the month of May. And some of those things that if we were in session, we would have had several various field trips. This year, our second graders had been able to go to Chayhaka Basum. That was a new field trip that had been added with this former honor PTO. Fourth grade classes spend the day at Lindell Park. And those things just were going to be happening this year. Our PSC Celebration Day and Grape House Transplanting Day is a big deal. A lot of prairie science classes. Students in the prairie science classes harvest seeds in the fall. And those seeds are dried for the winter. And they spend time out in the grape house planting those seeds and doing lots of different experiments of watching them grow, whether they're fertilized or different levels of sunlight. They're making lots of experiments and data collection. And then at the end of the month of May, they go out into the field and plant those prairie plants. So, that's kind of a big deal out of prairie science class. And that's kind of been put on hold this year. But fourth grade students would have had their band visits at Kennedy Secondary School and their band sign up. Our fourth grade orchestras were going to take place. The fourth graders take a date and tour through all of the elementary schools in town and perform a concert where we really hear their progress and equals of the year. And then many classes had a special field they planned as well for they just venture outside, just go over and bring space at Cleveland and into a variety of field activities. So, those are something we're being, you know, we just talked about, those special events that take place in May. And then we've had several teachers step up to the plate and help these, a couple of special May activities take place virtually. One thing that did happen on May 1st, teachers made their way around town and outside of town to students' homes and spend time delivering May baskets and special messages to say hello in respect to social distancing. So, lots of teachers put some extra miles on reaching out to their students and just being able to see people in person and deliver some special messages. With the help of Ms. Ariel Crohn at the Public Library, they were able to do a public library visit. Typically, she comes to each of our elementary schools and talks to all of the kids about the summer meeting program. This year, she was able to promote a summer meeting program that will be taking place online. It begins June 1st and runs through July 25th. So, there's lots of resources right on our public library website, giving parents and students a good overview of the summer meeting program. Some really neat things are happening there. One of those components is a virtual book bunch. There will be a virtual book bunch or book club taking place each Thursday afternoon for the fourth through eighth grade students. So, the public library is really doing an excellent job of reaching out to all students of all ages to promote that literacy and reading during the summer. Another virtual activity that took place recently, in each spring of the year, we have our second grade classrooms come over to Cleveland for a little welcome and orientation to the school that they will be attending next year. We spend, have those second graders spend time in the third grade classrooms. The third graders and teachers get to have an opportunity to meet some of the staff that they will be working with in third grade. This year, our third grade teachers put together a video welcome. We each recorded a little snap and we're on the screen like parade bunch and introduced ourselves and talked a little bit about what we do. And then we provided a virtual meeting tour of Cleveland and some of those common areas that they will frequently see and spend time in next year. So, it was really fun recording that Zoom meeting just to introduce ourselves so those incoming third grade students could have a chance to meet the teachers and see some faces that they will be little world to know next year. I also wanted to just acknowledge the work of our special ed department, our title department, and our RTI interventionists. Those services needed to kind of pause at first to get the distance learning up and running. But those intervention support services really stepped up to the plate as well and did their diligence with supporting students, providing accommodations, providing that ongoing intervention service that they have had during the school year. We had some special ed pairs who routinely provided support via Zoom meetings for kids. Our title staff were able to utilize, with help of the Public Library, were able to utilize a program called Read Live. And pairs were connecting with students and working through the Read Live program with them. And it was fun. I was able to kind of jump in on some little sessions and say hello to the students and hear the reading and offer some encouragement as well. That's a very outstanding program and we're fortunate to pair with the Public Library and utilize that. So, a lot of shout out to the continued support, special ed instruction and support that has been provided to our students. And then just as Mr. Kolbeck noted, I wanted to acknowledge through the great work that our pairs have been doing in regard to childcare. Now that the weather's been nice, they've been taking lots of advantage of getting outside and doing some outdoor activities. So, those kids have lots of moments and fun during those childcare hours. Four of our staff members, four parent educators, have been spending lots of time at their sewing machines. And it's been a great way that our first public schools have been able to join that community supporting sewing face masks for the Fergus Falls Face Masks Room. As well, Leggeridge and Healthcare reached out to this group and asked if they could sew head coverings for staff at Leggeridge and Healthcare that were in need. And the parents spent some time developing a pattern that was going to be really workable and functional. And many of us at town have been sewing face masks and headgear. And it's really kind of fun to just step inside that room and watch them do their work. They are skilled seamstresses and have not stopped. Every day, they've stepped up and kept going. I also wanted to, kind of one really happy, exciting thing that arrived last week, the Wonders Curriculum arrived. So, our new weekend light drive curriculum was delivered to the district last Thursday, I believe it was. And the teachers are really anxious to get their hands on those materials. And they received the electronic resources via those links. And they're hoping to spend some time this week collaboratively looking at that curriculum and unpackaging it and having that to study throughout this time and during the summer. So, that was really exciting. And Mr. Kolbeck, you took a picture of the truck being loaded and kind of sent that out to staff members so they could see that it was actually actually here. And then as well, I also wanted to acknowledge that we have the drive-by celebrations taking place this Thursday evening from 4:00 to 6:00. And those will be a time to celebrate one another and the hard work that's gone into making distance learning the possibility that it has been and providing that ongoing instruction. So, staff, I think, are just as excited as the team, the students and their families just to see each other and wave at each other. And lots of fun things are planned. We have some posters that have been made and banners and music and lots of fun things planned for Thursday evening. So, I hope everybody does have a chance to join that drive-by celebration and celebrate the hard work that's gone into this successful school year. And that, with that, I think I will conclude my report for today.
Any questions for Ms. Run? Thank you, Ms. Run.
Thank you.
Our next report will be from our secondary school principal, Dean Monkey. Dean, can you hear us?
I think we lost Mr. Lemke. We have Lemke himself. Or I think it's my turn. Does that sound right?
That is correct.
Okay, sounds good. Well, thanks for an opportunity here to share with you a little bit this morning. Usually, at this time of the year, it can be a busy time for us just in relationship to making some teacher hires. And probably thankfully, we've had just a few of those options here this spring. We've had a unique situation, relationships here. There's some kind of postal positions and meeting table. But we have had a couple of positions that we've been working on. We have one elementary opening here in the fifth and sixth grade area. We have a couple in front of special education teacher openings. And then we also have a high school BLC part-time English position. So, we conducted a couple of interviews last week over Zoom, and all those went well. And so, we'll continue to work on that here now over the course of the next couple of weeks, see if we can get some of these positions filled here in the early part of the summer months. And then, of course, this graduation week for us. And I tell you, I just can't thank enough all the people who've stepped forward in relationships, putting it together. Our graduation program events for this week started in early May when an idea came out of the high school office from Mr. Tilkey and Val and Brenda there in relationships, making senior banners available for all of our senior graduates. Fantastic idea. It'll be a great cooperation from City Ever and Kerry City and the school store. And you've been enjoying those on the private avenue here now over the course of the last couple of weeks. Just in one example, people stepping forward and some of the service dancers here trying to make sure we get an opportunity to recognize our senior graduates. Our ceremony this year will be virtual. It will be available with a link from the office of the school district website. So, obviously, that is not active as of yet. But Thursday night for our high school BLC virtual graduation ceremony. Friday night at 7:00. We're on Kennedy Secondary School BLC IQ Canada graduation. That will be available on my school district website for anybody who wants to tune in and check out our graduation on Friday. Once again, people like Lori Anderson, Justin Borstein, Winnie Christiansen, they have been working tirelessly behind the scenes to do all of the editing and putting together this program over the computer. And their skills are shining through because I've seen a little bit of the sneak preview. And I think everybody's really enjoyed this program. We did invite our seniors, one household at a time, to come in and get an opportunity to walk across the stage. So, we've got the majority of our senior graduates who will be in that capacity and then will be shown on the screen. Fortunately or unfortunately, from what I've seen, the time it takes to do all this will probably be no shorter than the regular graduation ceremony. But I think people are really going to enjoy it. We got some fantastic seniors that volunteered to speak for us. A lot of people who maybe came in, said a few words. And we've got some great special music that you're really going to enjoy. So, are you ready to tune in for the high school BLC graduation at 7:00 p.m. on Thursday? That'd be the 28th. And then for our high school graduation, go ahead and tune in at 7:00 p.m. on Friday, May 29th, this week. And then after that, once again, just because of some wonderful cooperation from our community, we're offering a fireworks show to our graduating seniors, our households after this ceremony. We don't quite know exactly on the timing, but we're looking to have those households graduate gather in a vehicle, a household vehicle here at the Kennedy Secondary School approximately around 9:00 p.m. From there, we make our way out to the fairgrounds and have an opportunity for basically a private showing. for basically a private showing, um, of some, you know, test of fireworks from, uh, and then shown out at the, um, West Otter Tail, uh, fairgrounds, uh, here right in Fergus Falls. And, uh, you know, some of the people have stepped up to make that happen. First, we got a big shout out to Mayor Ben Shire. Um, I talked to him about this idea early on and, uh, Ben said, "Well, I, I think I know someone." You know, you always get a little bit eerie when people start saying, "I think I know somebody." Well, uh, Mayor Shire actually did know something. That person got back to us right away, um, was able to, uh, do the fireworks show for us, uh, and, uh, sort of kind of helped get all that stuff started, um, along with, um, the city, the city council, uh, police department, fire departments, uh, the fair board, um, post crime committee, uh, sheriff's posse, um, there's just maybe too many to mention here, but everybody, anytime I call somebody, they basically just said, "What can we do? What are we looking for now?" And also on that evening, we have some great cooperation coming from, uh, Lake Broadcasting, the Lakes Radio here, um, starting at 7:00 PM on Friday night, um, post ceremony and everything, which is basically live on the radio at, uh, ninety-seven point seven, uh, they're after the channel out there. And, uh, we're going to be hosted by great host, Mary Norman, uh, for the evening. We're going to run all the way from 7:00 PM until 10:00 PM, uh, covering, uh, the whole graduation event. Uh, so again, uh, just another example of people stepping forward, uh, Lakes Radio here offering to, uh, cover that, uh, and that will be available at 9:00 PM on ninety-seven point seven, uh, and also on the Fergus Now Avenue as well. So we hope as many people as possible can tune in. Uh, we do want to let the public know that, as we mentioned, uh, the fireworks display itself out in the fairgrounds is a, uh, private showing in relationship to being on the grounds. Uh, that would have reserved for just our, uh, senior parents and their household, senior, seniors, their parents and their households. Um, and so, but, uh, from what I'm told, uh, this display will be available to be seen across the community, uh, because it's, uh, going to be of pretty high quality. Uh, so other than, uh, the fairgrounds itself, there are probably other opportunities for the community to view these fireworks, presumably 10 or 10:15 PM, uh, this Friday, May 29th. So once again, thanks everybody for helping with that. Um, and I should also make mention that, uh, during our high school ALC graduation, we're looking to have upwards of twenty-eight seniors graduating from that program. We believe that this is the highest development, uh, that we've ever seen from any one given year. Um, and we also have, um, forty graduates coming through our online school, Fergus Falls IQ Canada, uh, and some of those students also likely participate, uh, even in the ceremony here this Friday night. Um, so, um, a lot to thank before and a lot of people who worked very hard and put all of these programs on. Other upcoming things, um, usually in the month of June here, we have a, um, middle school summer, uh, school program that we run. Um, this year, we're going to push that back a little bit. The first date with which we would start that would be July 20th, um, and around the four weeks from there. Um, we're hoping that by July 20th, the distance hall groups will be willing to propose to pace, uh, in construction, um, within the school itself. So that's why we push that back to July 20th. Uh, we do have some credit recovery happening, uh, for any of our high school students that will start right away here in June under a distance learning format. Uh, so we have some opportunities for some of our students to be able to catch up with, um, if they have that opportunity. Um, and also later on this summer, uh, because we didn't have an opportunity to invite, like, incoming fifth graders over to the Kennedy Secondary School for tours, we will look to have an extended, um, Right Start program that we usually run in August anyway, plenty of opportunities for those new students, not only in their grade, but other grade levels to invite to the building, uh, for some tours and sharing us some information, uh, so they'll be all set for the start of the school next September. So we ask parents to, um, watch for a mailing coming, uh, around the first part of August, uh, to indicate times and places and relationships that Right Start program for those students and for our fifth graders. Um, and then as, uh, Mr. Kolbeck and Mrs. Run indicated, um, we also have a big task in front of us here in relationship to the return of school materials that I need out there. And so, um, we have an extended schedule on that, just to be able to, um, accommodate all the people that we need to stop by, uh, to drop off, um, Chromebooks, uh, hotspots, textbooks, uh, classroom materials, um, school-owned instruments, um, maybe some music clothing in there, uh, and anything else basically that's the property of the school. Um, and so we publish this out to our parents, which is very review. Um, we're looking to invite grade levels six and seventh grade to come in on June 4th. It's an extended hours from eight to seven. And then this should be easy to remember because we let them by, by date and grade level after that. So on June 5th, we'll have our fifth graders come in from eight until five. Uh, this is basically just for parents to drop, uh, drive-by art in the bus loading zone. We'll have some tables just outside of door C and door D, the bowling chip. And, uh, we ask you to book all these materials in a plastic bag with the name of the student and the grade level, uh, put on a piece of paper inside the plastic bag. You can just drop it off at the door, we'll take it from there. Uh, we just appreciate everybody helping us bring that back, um, over the course of these next couple of weeks. In the following week, on June 8th, we'll have our eighth grade, um, students bring their materials back. June 9th for ninth grade, June 10th for tenth grade, June 11th for eleventh grade, all between the hours of eight to five. So, um, looking forward to kind of getting some materials back, putting an inventory on those, uh, and getting everything ready for next fall. Um, so with that, uh, I think I will just give an update. Any questions up here?
Any questions for Mr. Monkey?
Dean, I got one quick question for you. Um, if we have parents who have kids in like three different grades, can they drop off all three kids' things on one day? I mean, do they have to drop off the eighth graders on the eighth?
No, that's not a problem at all. Um, we'll basically take materials anytime we can get them back. You know, if you have a fifth grader and a ninth grader and an eleventh grader and you bring them all in, um, that's fantastic. You probably would be able to help us if you have two or three students to bring it back in two or three different bags. So we could just write the name of, um, one student, one grade level, and then shoot a bag as you bring it back. Um, but to bring it back all at the same time is no problem whatsoever. We'll take anything we want to get.
I think the other thing on the fireworks, I think for people in the community and, and I think some of the staff, I know there's, there's, they're probably going to be parking on the bypass. That's usually a pretty good viewing area up there where they can stay in their cars and maybe even, you know, the parking lot will be open on the, uh, Prairie Wetlands. But I've heard a couple of people saying that they're going to be parked up there to watch the fireworks.
Yeah, and from what I'm hearing, and I know nothing about fireworks, but, uh, in the past, they've had shows that they've put on with what they call twos and fours. Um, and what we're getting in this show, in this show are going to be, uh, fours, sixes and eights by way of size of the fireworks. So it sounds like it's going to be a, uh, not very long show, but an intense one, um, that will probably be nice and high and nice and loud. So, um, you know, we can't, uh, obviously, we're, we're not offering any ideas and relationships where people can go. We're just mad concerned about where, um, our seniors and those families will be located right there on the grounds. But there's plenty of areas right around there, I think, with, uh, large parking lots and things like that. So we just ask that people be safe as they find a place to view, uh, but it sounds like it's going to be, uh, an intense show, like twelve to fifteen minutes, uh, but of, uh, really nice quality. So, uh, I think they're going to be able to be seen from a long ways away.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Monkey. Okay, our last report is from Superintendent Drake.
All right, good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to start out and just say congratulations to our seniors. This is a culmination and a celebratory, uh, opportunity after thirteen-year journey in our school district. And to me, uh, two of the most exciting days of the school year are our first day of school, uh, when, uh, students come through the doors and they're ready and eager to, uh, to learn and be with their friends and, uh, partake in all the activities that are afforded in the district. And then graduation night, uh, when you see those seniors and the young men and women that they've become along the journey and, uh, to celebrate their accomplishments and wish them well in all future endeavors. Uh, special thanks go out to all the people that, uh, took time to plan a special ceremony for them under these very unusual circumstances this year. I think the program's really going to be, uh, wonderful and look forward to, uh, the celebration with the fireworks and everything afterwards. I think it's, uh, going to be a nice send-off for those, uh, seniors and their families and we hope to connect face-to-face at some point in the future, uh, to congratulate them in person when we're able. Uh, I want to thank, uh, certainly the staff, uh, for all their hard work this year. Um, we've had a very good year, uh, but certainly have had our share of challenges, uh, especially this fourth quarter, uh, with the distance learning model. Uh, I know that everyone, uh, worked very hard, uh, they were flexible, taking on different roles and responsibilities. Uh, we saw really some tremendous work going on, uh, people going above and beyond in terms of their creativity and, uh, trying to offer really engaging lessons. And we learned a lot and grew a lot as an organization through this experience. And we've already had, uh, conversations about, uh, taking what we've learned and what went well and making sure we don't lose that, uh, when hopefully we're back in a normal educational experience, uh, September 8th next fall. Uh, because there's a lot that we can do to augment our teaching practices that we learned this spring, uh, by trial under fire, I guess you would say. Uh, I want to thank, uh, several, uh, organizations, uh, the city of, uh, Fergus Falls for all its help, uh, and within that, uh, the police department and fire department, uh, for their help with, uh, graduation. Uh, certainly the Five Forty-four Foundation, um, our PTOs, uh, Dollars for Scholars, uh, who did a really nice job, again, recognizing, uh, many of our seniors with, um, scholarship dollars that will help them fulfill their dreams that they have, uh, plans to pursue after graduation. Mr. Monkey had, uh, mentioned the extended, uh, the summer programming that we do, uh, between extended school year, which is for some special ed students, um, our credit recovery, our honor adventures, uh, that stuff will take place, uh, distance learning, um, honor adventures won't start till late, uh, late in July, but, uh, we have a distance learning model through mid-July for any of those programs, uh, that are starting earlier. And then, uh, we plan to be face-to-face from about mid-July, uh, through the end of August with those programs and, uh, hopefully, uh, the models, uh, in terms of the coronavirus, uh, will allow us to, uh, do that. We're looking forward to getting back to face-to-face work with our students. Um, with that, uh, we look forward to the parade celebrations that are going on at the elementaries as a way to, um, wish everyone off to a fantastic summer. And again, uh, my thanks, uh, to the school board and staff for all the support and hard work this year and, uh, we will come back, uh, even stronger in the fall. So, thank you.
Any questions for Superintendent Drake? Thank you. Moving on to our general consent items, we have the minutes for the May 11th, 2020 board meeting. Personnel, Elaine Jenkey.
Yes, good morning, everyone. Um, we have a few items, uh, just here. Certified staff resignation, we have Kristen Knudsen, uh, elementary teacher at Adams, and Scott Kolbeck during his report had, uh, briefed the board on that, um, resignation. Certified staff retirement, um, Terry Mullen, she's been a special ed teacher, uh, here at Kennedy Secondary School for ten years and we have resolution during the new business on her. And then a sports staff retirement of Gary Fredrickson, he's been a part-time custodian for the last five years at Roosevelt Education, along with a resolution in, um, later on in the new business. And then last, uh, item, last item that I have here is a head coach hire and that would be Joel Haicas, head boys soccer coach, um, going into this next fall here. So I would recommend all of those for board approval.
Thank you, Elaine. Uh, do we have a motion to approve the general consent items?
I'll make that motion.
Kirby, thank you. Do we have a second?
One second.
Thank you, Melanie. Uh, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Uh, Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Natalie Knudsen.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Lebkey.
Yes.
Missy Herries, yes. Steven Vagasa?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to old business, we have the new s- school board policy seven thirteen, uh, student activity accounts. Do we have a motion to approve that? Thank you, Missy. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Kirby. Uh, any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Natalie Knudsen.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Lebkey.
Yes.
Missy Herries, yes. Steven Vagasa?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Uh, the motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to new business, our first item is the extended school year, uh, services and summer school for special education students. Uh, this is an annual motion, so do we have a, somebody want to offer that motion?
I'll offer that motion.
Thank you, Melanie. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Missy. Uh, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Lebkey.
Yes.
Missy Herries, yes. Steven Vagasa?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Natalie Knudsen?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Item number two is our, is the twenty, twenty, twenty twenty-one resolution for membership in the Minnesota State High School League. Uh, the resolution re- resolved that the governing board of school district number five forty-four, county of Otter Tail, state of Minnesota, delegates the control, supervision and regulation of interscholastic athletic and fine arts events, uh, referred to Minnesota statute section one twenty-eight C, point oh one, to the Minnesota State High School League. And so hereby certifies to the state commissioner of education as provided for by Minnesota statutes. Further resolve that the Fergus Falls High School is authorized by this, the governing board of said school district or school to renew its membership in the Minnesota State High School League and participate, and item number two is participate in the approved interschool activities sponsored by said league and its various subdivisions. Further resolve that the governing board hereby adopts the constitution, bylaws, rules and regulations of said league and all amendments thereto as the same as are published in the latest edition of the league official handbook, uh, filed at the office of the school district or as appears on the league's website, as the minimum standard governing participation in said league-sponsored activities. And that the administration and responsibility for determining student eligibility and for the supervision of school activities are signed to the official representative identified by the governing board. Will somebody offer that resolution move for its adoption?
I'll make, I'll offer that resolution.
Thank you, Kirby. Do we have a second?
One second.
Thank you, Melanie. Uh, any discussion? Again, this is an annual resolution. Roll call, please.
Steven Vagasa?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Natalie Knudsen?
Yes.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Lebkey?
Yes.
Missy Herries, yes. The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Item number three is the call for workers' compensation insurance bids. Um, do we have a motion to approve that for the call?
So will.
Thank you, Missy. Do we have a second?
One second.
Thank you, Melanie. Blake, do you have anything you want to share about it? It's just an annual. Okay. Any other, do you have any questions? Roll call, please.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Natalie Knudsen?
Yes.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Lebkey?
Yes.
Missy Herries, yes. Steven Vagasa?
Yes.
Uh, the motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, Melanie Cole is going to offer the following resolution, item number four.
Whereas Terry Mullen began her employment with Fergus Falls School District in August two thousand and ten, and whereas Terry has been a valued employee with Fergus Falls Public Schools for the past ten years, whereas Terry has done an excellent job as a special education teacher for the district, and now therefore be it resolved by the Fergus Falls School Board to thank Terry Mullen for her ten years of dedicated service to the Fergus Falls Public Schools. I will offer that resolution move for its adoption.
Thank you, Melanie. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Kirby. Kirby. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes. Missy Hermes, yes. Stephen Viegasa.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Natalie Knudsen.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Lebkey.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Item number five is the resolution on the retirement of Gary Frederickson. Whereas Gary Frederickson began his employment with the Fergus Falls Public Schools in September 2015, and whilst Gary has been a valued employee with the Fergus Falls Public Schools for the past five years, and whereas Gary has done an excellent job as a custodian for the district, and now therefore be it resolved by the Fergus Falls School Board to thank Gary Frederickson for his five years of dedicated service to the Fergus Falls Public Schools. Will somebody offer that resolution move for its adoption?
I'd like to offer that resolution and move for its adoption.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Melanie. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Natalie Knudsen. Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Lebkey.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Stephen Viegasa. The resolution is adopted.
Can you guys hear me?
Now we can.
Yeah, I can.
Okay, now I can hear you.
Okay. Item number six is the...
I didn't see you pulling on it, but yes, I guess.
We heard you talking, so we figured that was a yes. Item number six is to set the FY 21 regular meal rate for adults to $3.85 for lunch and $1.90 for breakfast according to MDE and USDA guidelines. Do somebody want to offer that motion to approve?
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Missy. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Melanie. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Natalie Knudsen.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Lebkey.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Stephen Viegasa.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Item number seven is the FY 2021 School District Membership Agreement with Lakes Country Service Cooperative. Do we have a motion to approve that?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Kirby. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Melanie. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Natalie Knudsen.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Lebkey.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Stephen Viegasa.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. That concludes our regular school board meeting. Our next regular school board meeting will be Monday, June 8th at 7:00 a.m. right here at the Otter Community Room at Kennedy Secondary School. Following this, we will go into a work session to talk about the portrait of a graduate, class numbers, buildings and grounds position, graduation, and student handbook. With that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Melanie. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Missy. Any discussion? One more roll call, please.
One more roll call, yay! Okay, Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Natalie Knudsen. Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Lebkey.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Stephen Viegasa.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We are adjourned.